Well, it was quick. Good evening and welcome. Welcome to the August 13th, 2025 Willett City Council Meeting. We appreciate you being here. We really do. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and former Mayor Virginia Stransky is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening. Thank you. Stand, salute, pledge.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and thank you, Virginia.
Councilmember Virgin?
Here.
Gonzalez?
Present.
Stransky?
Yes.
Alanyz?
Here.
Alanyz.
Here.
All men.
Here. Here, still, here.
Your names change. The City Council welcomes input from the audience. If there is a matter of business on the agenda that you are interested in, you may address the council when this matter is considered. If you wish to speak on a matter that is not on the agenda, you may do so at this time. In order for everyone to be heard, please limit your comments to three minutes per person. The Brown Act regulations do not allow actions to be taken on audience comments in which the subject is not listed on the agenda. Members of the public are asked to observe the rules equipped to forum. While the City Council welcomes public criticism of policies, procedures, programs, or services of the agency, behavior that disrupts, disturbs, impedes, or renders infeasible the orderly conduct of meeting, and that includes but is not limited to the use of profanity, slurs, yelling from the audience, threatening remarks, physically threatening conduct, or physical or verbal displays of disrespect, will not be tolerated, and the individual will be removed immediately.
And I want to add, if there's something on the agenda that your time is of the essence and you want to speak and then leave, you're welcome to do that, too. So let me start by asking, is there anybody who has anything that they want to comment on, on any non-agenda item? Virginia.
I'm Virginia Stransky. I would like to ask you to take a review of your phone system. I tried to call the city at different times, and I'm not just a crank. Sometimes I actually have some business that I needed to do. But I had a person offering to buy my business, my building, and I couldn't get a person. And I called even the office where the young women are, and all I got was, you know, leave a message and we'll get back with you. Well, I had somebody writing up an offer for me at that point in time, and I needed the exact zone, and I wasn't sure of what it was, you know, residential slash commercial, et cetera. And I couldn't get an answer. I finally asked my son if he'd come over and go upstairs to see if he could find anybody, and he very nicely did that for me. There was someone up there who answered his question. That was a senior meeting. It was legitimate that people were out of their offices. But, you know, if you had an emergency and you don't have somebody standing there to make a run to City Hall, and I didn't want to call our new police chief, but I was very annoyed with that. I thought sometimes people do have business that they'd like to take care of, and I thank you for your courtesy.
Okay. Thank you for the comment, Virginia. Is there anybody else who has any comment on a non-agenda item? Is anybody in a hurry and would like to speak about any Agendice item? Okay, then we're moving on then to the consent calendars. We have two consent calendar items. We have one for the minutes of a special meeting and the regular July 23rd meeting, and then we have, we're going to designate council members of League of Cities, the 2025 Annual Conference. Presenting staff member Dolores. Dolores, go ahead.
The meetings are, minutes are in there. The League of California Cities holds a conference every year, and this is where the voting goes for the President of the League of California Cities and all the other positions that are held. Normally, in the past, we've had the designated person that is on the committee go, that attends the meeting, as the designated voter. So we just need to take a vote to either have Jerry put on it. He is not attending the conference this year, but I don't know if there's a ballot that you could mail in.
I haven't talked to Sarah, so I can find out.
Okay, so you may or may not go to the League of Cities?
I'm probably not going to be attending.
Okay.
But I would be happy to vote on anything if I vote.
Okay. Is, is there anybody who would like to be appointed as an alternate?
I would like to be considered.
The Vice Mayor would like to be considered as an alternate?
Certainly.
Anybody else like to be considered?
No, thank you.
All right. So we're, this is on the consent calendar, but we're actually going to have to vote on it. So let's take item number A for City Council meetings, and then we'll do the alternate. Is there anybody who would like, who has reviewed the minutes for the special meeting and the regular meeting and would like to make a motion?
I would like to make that motion.
I second it.
Motion with a second. Are there any corrections?
And the only thing I'd, I'd just offer up to Dolores is that, Dolores, I think you're putting too much effort into this. I think you could condense those comments.
Okay.
They don't need to be verbatim. You can summarize people's thoughts, I think. Save yourself a lot of time.
I agree with that wholeheartedly. But that doesn't change the minutes, right? Okay, okay. So we have a motion of a second to approve the minutes of both the special meeting and the minutes. And no public comment? Okay, go ahead.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Alanyz?
Aye.
Sorry about that. All right, so the council, the alternate council member, do we have a motion for the Vice?
I make a motion to appoint Matthew as an alternate.
Okay. Is there a second?
Sounds like you can do that.
Are we appointing Matthew as the alternate?
As an alternate.
And Jerry as the main?
Right. Correct.
And I just want to point out, the reason that I'm planning on not attending is, given our financial situation, I don't think it would be wise if we're going to be cutting training. I will explore with the League if I can vote in absentia. But I think if we're looking at cutbacks, I think that council members going to a conference is probably gravy and not something we should be doing.
Okay. Any public comment on the alternate? There are none? All right, go ahead, Dolores.
Who was the second on that?
I was.
Burton?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Alanyz?
Yes.
Alanyz.
Yes. Okay, moving on to monthly activity reports, accounts payable. It's not on the consent calendar, and this is for, this is not for action, but it's for us to discuss it.
I just, I guess, Tom, I would just note for the, which I'm sure it's already in the record, that the warrants for the month were just over $2 million.
Does that include payroll?
No. Well, it does not, it appears to include all the overhead for payroll, but not payroll.
Okay.
Is that correct?
No, it includes payroll as well.
Well, I don't know if that's possible, because payroll is 2.3 million.
Right now, it's showing what is the payroll liability accounts actually being, running through the checks. So it's, what we're looking at, when you see 1900, it's kind of doubling, it's kind of showing the payroll liability and as a product of the way that this report is reading at the moment.
All right. And my correction, payroll is 230,000 every two weeks, right?
Yes. No, 270 now.
270?
Yes.
Okay. I was using the wrong number, sorry.
So can you just show me where, because I see the...
Let's see here. It has the Calpers, IRS payments, Legal Shield, the garnishments. Oh, wait, I might stand corrected here. I think it does not see in the actual payroll this time around. Yes, no, it's just the liabilities that are paid out.
Yeah, that's what I thought. I mean, I think it's appropriate. I don't, I don't think that, I know those are public records. If somebody really looks for them, then I don't think that they, but, so then there's another 200, that's 270 a pay period.
270, yeah.
So 540 a month.
Yes.
So the expenditures were two and a, over two and a half million dollars last month. I just...
Well, the 270 includes the payroll liabilities.
It does.
It does.
Well, then, then we've got a little more of a problem because the, because the payroll liabilities on page one are totaled at $91,000, on page two, they add $96,000.
So there's one thing to note about these, is that when you're looking at the liabilities, you're not only looking at the citywide expenses, but you're also looking at the employee payments made to taxes and stuff.
Sure, sure. You don't have the net check. I'm just saying that I, I don't think that that ends up being an accurate statement.
So if you were to look at page two, you see retirement payment EE, that's employee, then you see retirement payment ER, that's employer. So they're, they are including deductions from people's paychecks as well as actual costs to the city.
Well, then, can you tell me what the net pay to the employees is for a pay period?
The net pay to the employees is somewhere around 130,000, give or take, give or take how much, how much shift differentials and how much in overtime is taken down.
I get all that part. So, anyway, the point being that it's still an excess of 2 million bucks, two, somewhere between two and a quarter and the two and a half.
And this is for the full month of July?
This is for the full month of July.
Correct, okay. All right, any other questions regarding accounts payable? Okay. One of the things that I notice, and I know that I've said this several times from here, is it bugs me when I know that we have consultants doing the tasks of, that city workers can do. I'm not saying that there's not a need for consultants, because sometimes there is a need for consultants, but sometimes there's not a need for consultants. And we're certainly getting fewer and fewer consultants, which is good, but I did notice, I think there's about six or seven different consultants that we're paying. Some of them are for the Rails Trail, which is reimbursable and so forth. But I actually would like to get towards the end of the year where we're down to two or three consultants, and the city staff is doing almost everything else, but the city manager is certainly aware of my thoughts on that. All right, any questions about payroll or accounts payable? All right, moving on to building permit activity. In our minutes, or in our agenda package, this is information only. So for July of 2025, we had seven new, seven permits, and this time last year, we had four new permits, so. All right, and then moving to commissions, agencies, and authorities.
Can I just ask one question?
Sure.
Or permits? Dusty, when do we, what we, can we expect to have the zone change permit application on the log yard north of town to the city? That in here for...
Yeah, so yeah, that's a general plan rezone, boundary line adjustment project for San Hedren to expand the log yard operations north of the existing one there. We received comments from Fish and Wildlife yesterday or Monday, and the consultant group that's being hired by the applicant is responding to those comments. Once those comments are addressed, we've already circulated the initial study and SEQA document, so once we make the revisions as requested by CDFW, then we'll be ready to set a hearing date. So I'm expecting to get a revised initial study soon, and then we'll go from there. So the earliest it would be is the first meeting in October, but that's pending satisfying CDFW's comments.
Thank you.
Has the fire chief weighed in on this 100% on these foray? Or do you know yet?
Yeah, so the way that that, we'll be bringing forward the general plan amendment and rezone, should council approve it, it'll have conditions on there to essentially make the fire department happy, amongst others. And then they'll be followed up by a site plan review application where we'll condition the project. So before that log yard operation could expand and take over those additional lands, assuming council approved it, they're going to have to install fire safe measures and otherwise satisfy any requirements of the fire department. But yeah, the Little Lake Fire is aware of the project and has...
Right. Okay, anything more? Any public comment on either the warrants or the building permit, or the business license or the warrant? I didn't ask for any public comment. Yes? Manny?
I have to look at the, what's going on with the payroll liabilities. We're looking at the quarterly payments of IRS from employees and employers. So you're looking at the cumulative three-month payments that will be made to the IRS associated with that.
What about quarterly IRS?
So yeah, it's basically the, the IRS payments that are developed and every, out of every month, and every month that we make a quarterly statement and pay them out for residuals. So we're looking at that part, too.
Okay. All right. If there's no public comment on those, commissions, agencies, and authorities, the Willett City Council meets concurrently as the City of Willett Planning Commission and the City of Willett Successor Agency. Any report? Okay, moving on to the city manager report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. I just have a few things to share tonight, first being, we're working with PG&E and their contractor over on East Hill. Walter and I talked about it last week, and making sure that they, they do a good job finishing up the sidewalk work and get the, get the drainage figured out for the, for the driveway adjacent to the PG&E yard, and actually for that little stretch through there where it's pretty flat. So that's, that's a work in progress. I think their paving's done, right?
The paving's done. They still have to do strength, and they have a retaining wall to do on that pole.
Yeah, I, I don't know exactly where they're at right now, but we're going to make sure they, they fix it correctly. Is that... Rod, is that the Kavanaugh's concern that was brought up, is that? Yeah. Yeah. I went out there and looked at it, and Walter and I, we've talked about it. So I think we have that one well in hand. The other thing, John Kavaznik and I have had several discussions about creating an entertainment zone for the City of Willetts and having an ordinance brought to the City Council for the downtown area to, essentially codify to, to create a zone for special events downtown. John's talked about having like a First Friday event like Cloverdale does. You know, just stress the purpose, the purpose of the entertainment zone is to support local business and, and promote economic development and protect public health and safety. So that's, that's something we'd like to ideally have, like a draft ordinance for the next meeting, just for part of the discussion, so we can, just for discussion purposes only, so we can get it out there and have, talk about the benefits of something like that for the city. Obviously, we need, we need, we need to promote local businesses, and we need to, we need to create economic development somehow.
And because most entertainment zones involve open containers of alcohol, I'd certainly like the police chief to be involved with that.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Any more discussion, or any more city manager report?
Just budget workshop. Just a budget workshop is next Wednesday from 10 to 4:00. I know we've talked about just what we want to do for the, it's a, six hours is a pretty small window for a budget workshop, so we're going to focus on the general fund, major day, and transportation tax. I think that'll eat up the entirety in six hours. And the agenda we're posting on Friday, correct? Technically, it's a special meeting for the City Council. So looking forward to that. I think, I think we'll have... And Rod, are you proposing maybe CIP projects kind of be put on hold like you've been proposing, and that are there any that we would just talk about if, as wish lists kind of thing, or got to do a case? I, I think for the most part, and correct me if I'm wrong, Walter, but this CIP projects are going to kind of be on the small side, if any, maybe look at emergency repairs that need, or critical repairs or critical projects that need to be completed. Focus on the big projects that are happening right now, rail with trail, solar project, and making sure we can get through those. So, and while the other things, we'll, we'll maybe put a pause on it for the, for the remainder of the fiscal year. So, all I have? Thank you.
Any public comment regarding the city manager's report? Okay, moving on to item nine, Department Recommendation Action. I'm sorry.
Do you have a question?
Hi, Robin, come on up. I'm sorry, I didn't see you. Welcome.
My name is Robin Leeler. This isn't on the city manager's report. I was going back to the previous one about the City Council being the Planning Commission and the Successor Agency. And just for clarification, my belief is that the successor agency means who you appeal to if you don't like the decision. So can somebody answer that for me?
That has to do with, and Dusty, we had a...
Redevelopment Agency.
Redevelopment Agency. And when it got sunsetted, it, we were required to have a successor agency to manage its expenses. So it's basically managing any of the commitments, expenses, and any monies out there. Is that correct, Manny? And obligations that were associated, that's what it does.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. Thank you. Good catch. All right, so discussion to modify Chapter 2.40 Airport Amending Willett Municipal Code Ordinance 2.40.30 and 2.40.040 entitled Regulations for Use and Conduct Generally. Presenting staff member Keenan O'Shea, Airport Operations.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of council, citizens, and colleagues. Keenan O'Shea, Airport Operations for the City of Willett Municipal Airport, Oscar 28. As ordered by the Director of the Federal Aviation Administration due to the Part 16 complaint submitted against the City of Willetts, what we have here before you for initial discussion is the proposal to modify Chapter 2.40 Airport Amending Willett Municipal Code Ordinance 2.40.030 and 2.40.040 entitled Regulations for Use and Conduct Generally. It was determined by the Director and reiterated in his follow-up letter sent June 13th, June 30th of 2025, that the City of Willetts, as operator and owner of the Willett Municipal Airport, Oscar 28, was found in violation of Grant Assurance 19, Operation and Maintenance. The City Administration submitted a corrective action plan, which was received by the FAA on May 9th of 2025. The corrective action plan, or CAP, included the addressing of the obligation to plan and schedule to develop, implement, and enforce airport rules and regulations to address pedestrian and other unauthorized access to Oscar 28. In order to receive federal grant funding for projects, developments, and maintenance, the city is required to adhere to the 40 FAA grant assurances, which outline the obligations airport owners and sponsors agree to when accepting these funds. The intended purpose of the proposed changes to the existing ordinance is to comply with these assurances as directed and take the corrective measures to improve the safety of flight operations. It is not intended to restrict the use of the facility by tenants, their friends, families, and guests under their supervision. It is not intended to impede emergency operations or narrow aeronautical activities. This isn't for people who use the airport and its designated purpose. It's for the people who like fireworks off over the hillside, or decide to walk their dogs down the runway with their headphones on, putting themselves and others at risk. Other than personal accountability for themselves and their guests, this won't be for the tenants to enforce or police. Only the city and its officials have the authority to determine what is a violation and the appropriate consequences. The proposed changes to the ordinance were clearly defined by who and how the facility should be used, and make those who trespass, tamper with the property or infrastructure, or violate the safety and security of the facility or its users potentially subject to criminal charges and penalties by law. Now, much of the new language in the proposed changes you see in the packet came borrowed from other airports in the region, as well as the Mendocino County Municipal Code. The city is not trying to reinvent protocol. We're just trying to keep the facility funded and open. Thank you as all, thank you as always for your time and consideration in this matter.
Good presentation. Thank you. So in the, in the correspondence with the FAA, which they're two years behind in reimbursing us $144,000 for that, neither here nor there.
We've got some calls in, we've got some...
Okay. It's, yeah. The penalties and fines seem kind of extreme to me. I know it's up to $500. Is that their recommendation, or is that the, what other cities have?
That is in alignment with the county ordinance. The Director cited and stated that he wanted us to have language mirroring that ordinance in our municipal code as well.
I see.
So we're doing a little housekeeping. We're taking advantage of the fact that we're revisiting this, and we're trying to clean up a few things and make sure that we can improve as we go. I do plan on meeting with some of the tenants to get some input, just to make sure that I can at least hear their thoughts on this, and we can have a discussion.
So in my past career in law enforcement, let me tell you about the 602 of the Penal Code, which is simple trespassing. In order for a person to be guilty of trespassing, they actually have to have received a warning within 24 hours of trespassing before, and if they came back, then they'd be trespassing. I don't see anything in here where we could give a warning to someone before they're cited or criminal charges are against them.
Would you like to see that added?
I absolutely would like to see it, on almost all the violations.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
Make sure to include that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Well, I would, I would agree with you there, too, because I think the idea is that we need to make sure that, sake argument, if Keenan's out there with his plane, but he's letting his kids run on the field or something, not something, not, we really can't go after the kids, but we, we probably have some language in there that would say, your guests, your problem, we're dealing with you.
I'm a firm believer in conversation and warnings and approaching people and educating because there is a culture of through defense. You know, it is a nice, it's a beautiful place to be, and you can't blame people for wanting to check it out. The last thing you want to do is make it unapproachable or unwelcoming. Thank you.
So I have a question, and I know we've got some plane people in here, but hypothetically, Jerry flies in here from somewhere else, and I'm going to assume that a lot of other airports have similar rules, but I fly in, I go out the gate because I, not sure if you can get an Uber in town or not, but I get an Uber, meets me there, and I leave. He wouldn't necessarily have a combination to that gate coming back in, would they?
He absolutely would. We have it posted on the back of the sign on each pedestrian gate. It's covered by a flapper, so you can't just peek around and see it. You have to be inside the gate, lift the flapper.
So they could get back.
It's pretty standard procedure in a lot of airports.
Right.
So, so I guess my question is that way, if somebody leaves, comes back, so that we have some language in there that kind of, you know, so we can address it, because that's kind of along the same lines of what Tom's saying. I fly in, and I'm inadvertently violating something and don't know, so obviously the signage is important.
We're going to have to update some signage to reflect this once the Penal Code has been modified. has been modified and we can include that language. We're looking at a kiosk, so that when you do pull up to the airport, there's more information available. And I'm going to, we're going to put some phone numbers there for contacts for people to call. The newest FAA grant assurance number 40 is actually, speaks to the sale of abgas and says that if you have abgas for sale, you have to have it for sale. You can't limit sales of it. So, we're going to probably have to change the signage and make somebody available to meet with people who are customers and make sure they get their fuel.
But it's only for airplanes or from people with lawnmowers buy abgas?
Well, it's, it's only designed for, for aviation. What people use it for is not really up to us to determine.
Oh, okay.
There's no road tax on it. So, you know, putting it in automobile is not really ethical, but we don't have a metric to, to control that.
I think in the past, there was a direction from city administration to absolutely not allow anybody to have gas unless they had an airplane. So, you're saying we can change that?
I mean, you said you have to.
I believe under the assurances, we have to.
Well, that's good.
We're going to have to look at, look at that a little more closely with legal, but.
Okay. Well, we're in the business of selling abgas if they're not hoarding it.
I get it. I get it. Just like water.
And with the state of the revenue, I think we can all agree, we need every dollar we can get.
Yeah. It's all right.
Has there ever been an incident of a pedestrian versus airplane at the airport?
Never. This is honestly a lot, it's, it's blown out of proportion. It's, it's very rare that we encounter people in places they shouldn't be. We did have to do some security measures and update, like the gates and the codes. And some fencing went up between the housing on the, the west side of the airport, which prior to that, kids could just walk right to the fence and ride their bikes and who wouldn't on a nice piece of flat ground, you know?
Well, that was a complaint in the past when I was chief, that there'd be kids out there and people driving out there to them. It was related to the folks up there and it was folks coming up on, onto the property.
I think that the incidents with deer on the runway probably far surpasses anything-
Deer and turkeys, obviously.
Are a greater threat to aviation safety than-
No, and on the same token, we don't want to wait until there is an incident to act.
I get it.
We need to be proactive, for sure.
All right.
Well, we don't, we're, we also don't need to find a solution for something that's not a problem.
Agreed. Thank you.
Any other council questions? All right. Thank you. Good presentation. Is there any public comment on this?
As you know, we did receive two emails regarding-
We have a seven-page letter that I'm not going to read.
We've gotten two.
Okay.
There was a second one that was delivered today.
Okay. Can those be available to the public?
They can. I'm going to add them to the minutes.
Okay.
I'm assuming that's something I could do.
Yes.
Add them to the minutes and they will be posted online.
Okay.
When I post the minutes online.
Well, and I think that-
I'm not sure that that, I mean, if, if, if a person from the public wants their comments to be heard by the public, they should come down here and, and, I mean, they can distribute that to council, but I don't know that we have the obligation to be their voice to the community. They can send their letter to the editor of the paper or they can stand on a street corner, but I, I don't think we have an obligation to distribute that letter to, to, to the constituency of the town. I don't think we have that obligation.
I don't think you have the obligation either. I think if you wish to do it, you can.
Yeah. I, I'd, I'd say that if that individual, whoever that is, feel he needs to address a bigger audience than these five people up here, then he, it's, it's his responsibility to figure out how to do it.
So, what about if we said a correspondence was received by, then a name, and it's, and that letter's on file at the city if you want to review it? That would be okay?
That would be okay.
Okay. Does that need work for you?
Well, I mean-
It's correspondence. I mean, we legally, we, we receive legal correspondence.
And it's public record.
It's public record.
I'm, I'm not saying that it's not that, but, but whether we need to be the, yeah, I-
Okay. It'll be on file at the city if anybody wants to review it.
Then, I, I just wanted to add that we, whether it's just a one individual or not, but we, we're unnoticed by the FAA, so we do need to update our ordinance and obviously we need to get some input from other folks out there.
Did, did we, did we do any kind of follow-up investigation on the complaint letter to determine its validity? Or did we send comments to the FFA director?
If I could, the city has been basically broiled in litigation with the FAA, with an FAA complaint for like two years. One of the airport tenants, the one who wrote these letters that we're talking about, hired a, hired a Washington DC aviation lawyer who prepared and filed on this Part 16 complaint. And there have been multiple briefings by, so the city likewise engaged an FAA attorney and is being represented by a firm skilled in these very issues. And there's just been back and forth filings. We've been responding to the tenant's attorney's filings for a couple of years now. I'm sure it's very expensive. And so now it's come down to finally a determination that the city is in violation of its grant assurances by, by having unsafe conditions at the airport. And, and some of the evidence that was cited by the Director of the FAA included photographs of children riding their bikes on, on the airport and on the runway and people walking their dogs. And I think that those photographs carried a lot of weight with the Director and so the city's been ordered to address this or risk losing grant funding.
So, for the public, what, what a grant assurance is, is in the, the FAA has issued many grants to the city for the airport. And when grants are issued, you know, there's no such thing as free lunch or no such thing as free money. The city would agree, yes, we're going to enforce certain rules. FAA would say, we're going to give you the money for whatever project, but in exchange for it, you're going to make sure certain rules are followed, such as people not riding their bikes on the runway and, and having illegal access to the airport. And so the city agreed to this, but the city wasn't enforcing it as much as possible. Now, to the police department's credit, they, when they have time, they do go out, they go up to the airport, even though, as we all know, the airport is not contiguous with the City of Willis. So, they leave Willis, they go up through Burke Trails, welcome, and then they go to the airport, do their patrolling and they come back. It doesn't happen on a daily basis, but it happens several times a month. But we're going to continue to work on that and we're going to work fortunately to enforce the rules that have warnings on it.
So, is this, does this constitute a settlement agreement of all grievances?
No, this isn't a settlement agreement. This is a directive from the FAA that the city must, uh, must amend its ordinance to, to make-
Be unsafe.
Unsafe conditions.
Safer.
Right. The problem is, the problem that they have alleged is that certain tenants give out the codes, the gate codes to their friends and family. And then those friends and family come up and use the, use the facility like it's a public park. And, and so that's, that was very concerning to the Director as well as-
Did we, did we substantiate that that was true or not true or did we?
The photographs speak for themselves.
No, they don't. The photographs don't speak.
Well, the photographs show people on the, on the runway who shouldn't be there.
Who could only have access to-
Well, I looked at a photograph and, and they were in a taxiway 15 feet from a, from a, you could see the hangar. It was not a runway. I mean, that's a picture I saw. I, I don't claim to be the keeper of the knowledge here, but, but a violation for having your kid riding a tricycle 15 feet in front of your hangar for, how many airplanes go in and out of that airport a day? One or two?
Me? Twice?
I mean, it's completely legal for a kid to ride a tricycle across Main Street right here with 1,000 cars a day and one kid on a tricycle 15 feet in front of a hangar is, is, takes this kind of a punitive approach. I'm not picking on you.
No, no, no.
I'm not picking on you.
Go for it. But, um, we're at a point now where we've been ordered to do something by the FAA. And so it's, it's not a matter now of trying to weigh the evidence. It's, uh, we've got to comply. We've got to, we've got to amend our ordinance.
Well, would it-
After fighting, challenge.
Would, would it be worthwhile to, to have a conversation with this guy and, and try and, and, and put a little more reason into this controversy? Or is it, did we do that? Is, is that already happened?
So, the letter you guys saw in your packet was the short, the short letter. The original determination was over 30 pages long.
What was our letter to-
So, you have to get it to the mic so we can get on TV. Sorry.
I guess my question is, what was our letter in response to the allegation?
Well, there's been so many, uh, council members.
There's been a lot.
There's been a lot. It's been an exhausting process. And I can, I can speak for, for the airport when I say that there's been a, a decline in any kind of activity over the last year due to that fact, because of our increased security measures. I think we're in a pretty good place as far as protecting the public and making the airfield safe for its users. I think a lot of things were blown out of proportion and a lot of the photos are from before that time. So, it's, you know, when I looked at the, uh, the Part 16 complaint originally, there was over 100 something submissions. So, each submission is a photo or an incident with a date, a time cited by this individual. So, this is a, a masterwork of several years of somebody who's had problems with the, with the airport's operating.
But, but those, but, but those submissions could be editorial content.
Absolutely. There's always two sides to every story. It can be very misleading, for sure. I, I would agree.
So, other than this one individual, and I'm not downplaying him as a, as a person who's made these reports, has there been any other person whatsoever who's made a complaint about any of this activity at the airport?
No, unfortunately, it's a, or fortunately, it's a very harmonious group.
Okay.
Everyone seems to be of like mind and have the best interest of the airport and be very enthusiastic about aviation.
Okay, good. All right. Any other questions for Keenan from the council? So, now we'll go to public, thank you.
Please.
Go to public comments. Is there anybody who would like to comment on this?
I'm Mike Smith on the tenant of their, at the airport. 61 years, therefore, spent in operation. Not a single complaint about safety until this one individual came along. And his reality, um, is different than most anyone I know. And if there's not, if you can't challenge the FAA, you can't challenge the FAA. I mean, they're not gods. I mean, they think sometimes they are, but, you know, that you could challenge this due to the fact that there is one, one, after 61 years, complained about safety.
Okay, and so you have a hangar in the airport. Is there many people at the airport there more than you?
I don't know. Banning's there a lot. David Bone, he's got the business there. He's there.
Reach has a 24-hour presence.
Yeah, Reach is there. You know, I'm there quite a bit. I tell people I live there, basically.
All right. So, have you read this whole recommendation?
Apparently I've read the condensed version, the first one that's 30 pages long. I haven't seen the one that I saw, you know, the, I've read that one.
Possible ordinances that could be put in. Have you read those?
Yeah.
What do you disagree with?
Um, just the, well, ordinance, you got to have ordinances, I guess. I don't, you know, I'm not going to, I'm not going to challenge that stuff. I mean, you can write all that stuff if you want. That doesn't really matter to me, but, um, the atmosphere there is, has changed dramatically because of, of these complaints, you know? No one wants to be there. I've, I've, I've had my days where I regret the investment that I've made to be there just because there's one person that has really changed the whole atmosphere at our airport. Our friendly, inclusive, fun place to be has really been altered. It's unfortunate, but.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. Thanks for taking time to be here tonight.
Yeah, sure. Sure. Yeah, and I have, you know, there's, I've made contact with others, Reach, they're affected by all this too.
Okay, so tonight is discussion only.
Yeah.
And so by the end of this discussion, we'll have an idea of when we're going to bring this back to the council for possible action.
Yeah.
You'll know in just a minute.
I mean, Bruce is going down the right road here when he talks about the, you know, trying to figure out the reality of the situation of, you know, we don't have a safety issue. How we can be found violating Grant Assurance Rule 19, say, I don't know how they could, you know? The FAA doesn't have any protocol. Doesn't have to have two complaints, maybe three? Just one from one guy that has created all this healthy discontent, you know? It's, um, it's challenging to be okay with it. I'm certainly not, but.
I get it. Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Yes.
I just want to, just for transparency, I want to make everyone aware that this complaint has been ongoing for several years and it has been dismissed without prejudice several times. However, there are vehicles within the FAA complaint process where you can make extensions.
I see.
So, typically when, when we think we're in the clear and things have been sort of swatted down, it just keeps kind of regurgitating the same information.
Got it. Okay. Sir, did you want to comment?
Oh, man, go ahead. A tenant also. Pretty much along the lines with, with Mike as well. We haven't had any safety incidences up there. And there really hasn't been anybody to, to tell the FAA when these complaints come in that they're simply not valid. He's very manipulative in how he takes these pictures so that it appears as if there's some major safety issue. We don't really need to be criminalizing the public that want to come up and enjoy our airport or want to come and, you know, take a look at an airplane for the first time or anything along those lines. You know, he's made multiple accusations against a handful of us that are completely unvetted and, and absolutely false.
All right. Thank you. Is there, I'm sorry, is there anybody else?
Go, go ahead.
Is there anybody else who would like to comment about this topic? Okay, I'm closing public comment. Go ahead.
Um, I, I just thought maybe a resource that, again, I'm, I'm coming into this really late in the game.
Sure.
But, but I belonged to it for a number of years. In fact, I still belong to it, I think. It's called the AOPA. It's Aircraft Owners and Pilots Association that, but their whole, well, one of their main focuses is, is enhancing and building, uh, general aviation, you know? And, and they do a lot of, of lobby work in interacting between mostly cities that are being very greedy in landing fees and, and tie-down fees and being, you know, and mostly the, the problem that they're, they're dealing with, there are pilots that are saying, you know, I landed my Cessna 172 there and they charged me 250 bucks and I had to buy a tank of fuel, you know? And they address things like that, but they are a wonderful resource, I think, that maybe to, uh, but, you know, we no longer, I guess, have an airport commission, but, but we may reach out to them and, and solicit some, some input on it, on an issue like this as well as, because they're, they're very vocal and they're, and they've got a lot of, they understand the FAA. They take on the FAA all the time. So, I just toss out the AOPA.
Okay, so what's our, to, to, to the city comment? Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so I would just like to point out, as our council pointed out, you know, we've had this two and a half years, two years of accounting fee, uh, attorney fees and so on. You know, this, I just feel like there's two separate issues here. There's like the hurt that feels from somebody accusing you of doing something you didn't actually do, like, I can't believe they're not safe. And it's like, we are safe. Of course, we're perfectly safe. But they've given us a way out here. They've given us a very easy way out. And if we already are safe and I have every reason to believe, you know, testimony given to us there, then, then changing these ordinances is not going to alter any of that, I guess would be my concern. And, and it might show a little good faith in the sense that we are looking to try to solve these issues instead of spending another year doing another investigation and bringing this issue back up again. Because I don't think that's, I mean, I don't, I don't know the individual involved with the lawsuits at, at all, and I'm very unfamiliar. I'm new to the situation as well. at all, and I'm very unfamiliar, I'm new to the situation as well. But I don't think any of that is going to stop his false accusation. He's just, whatever people are gonna do, they're gonna do. And whether they're gonna accuse us of, it's gonna accuse us of. And I'm sorry that our tenants have to deal with that, but I do feel like it's two separate things here. I feel like what may be best for the city in terms of finding a solution and end to these things may involve just changing the ordinances and just proving to somebody else that yes, in fact, we are doing the things, the things that people are doing safe. We know that already in our hearts and our experiences, but if this is what it takes to get them to understand that, then...
You know, I agree with you and I think to a large degree on that. One concern I have in this ordinance is this, the airport rule, under the airport rules and staffing, the city will, the city will approve an issue of an RFP for professional services to update existing ordinance. And it, you know, it goes on to a whole bunch of things on having a, hiring, again, more consultants to do a study and to have a crossing guard, I guess, at the airport. And to think, I would be hesitant to, given our present situation, I'd like to see that either watered down or removed.
So Kenan questioned you, don't we already have city ordinances right now that cover every one of these topics?
I would say yes, in a general sense.
And so if we already have ordinances in those that cover all these, is the FAA saying that our ordinances aren't strong enough?
I believe they just want to see something in line with the industry standards and other airports in our region. And they want to see that language kind of match across the board. They're kind of a fan of that. They would like to see everything sort of uniform as far as that goes.
Well, it's not uniform because whether it's Hillsburg or Ukiah, they're all different.
Yeah, yeah.
The way you provide it to us.
Much larger airports as well.
So do you think that if we assured the FAA that the police department was going to increase patrols up there and we were going to do everything we could to enforce the current ordinances that we already have, do you think that might suffice?
I'm not sure at this point, not that we're this far in. I don't know if we can retract those statements, but after agreeing with council and all that, this is a financially, not a real heavy debt as far as getting an ordinance in place. It's a lot cheaper than fencing and a thousand signs and, you know, trying to really go in the clear with it. I think if we can get an ordinance in place and we can just have some conversations with people, we know there could potentially be consequences, but we can change the culture without having to really analyze people.
Okay.
And that's my genuine hope, but I can't really speak for the FAA. They'll tell you what they don't want you to do and what you can't do, which we already can tell you exactly what you have to do or won't do.
All right.
The FAA director gave some model language. They gave about three or four sentences about how these safety rules are going to be enforced. They basically said, do this, amend your ordinance by including this language that they are driving the city to use. And so they want to see, they want to see how we are going to enforce these rules of not allowing the public just to walk around the airport.
When you have wild land, I was trying to think of other airports on the North Coast that have wild land on 270 degrees or whatever.
Yeah, or soft.
In Garberville, does that, Garberville take?
Those are pretty good.
Grant funds? What's the one that's up, landed at it a number of times, just north of Scotia, out on the...
Rotorville.
Rotorville.
Yeah, Rotorville.
I mean, I think of those airports as being more typical of ours than Ukiah or Hillsburg.
Probably more in comparison, for sure. Do they have caves or fences or anything?
I don't think so.
No.
Shelter Cove has a golf course which adjoins the airport with no fence. No joke.
Yeah.
Yeah. If I had to land to the side of Shelter Cove, it'd just be a walk. At Lampton, there's a restaurant on one side of the runway, the fuel is on the other side of the runway. There's no other way to, I mean, people have to walk across the runway all the time.
No joke. In Shelter Cove, a brewery is attached to the airport with no fence.
I frequent Shelter Cove, I know.
So it just seems to me like we need to do the, and I know this is a public document that someone probably going to videotape and say, send to the FAA and say, oh my gosh, they're not following, but we need to do the minimal possible of changing our ordinance that includes warnings so we comply with FAA and we don't infringe upon freedom that our citizens might have.
Would you like to take it down a notch and take everything out except for what they have specifically towards the airport?
Let's try, that worked for me.
Let's try that for starters.
Well, I can rewrite it and I can get it for you.
Great, on next meeting in four weeks, so we can get reach here. So Mike, can we do this in four weeks?
Okay.
So what is, to Dolores, what is the first meeting?
In four weeks.
Yes.
From today, that would be the first meeting in September, which is September 10.
Okay, so this meeting, this topic will be re-agenedized for, it'll be a...
Discussion again?
Discussion and possible action. Impossible.
Kenan, do the FAA director's decision, direct the city to amend its ordinance or recommend to its council the adoption of a new ordinance.
There's a language we can stand on. I can't make these gentlemen vote one way or the other. I was directed to bring this to them.
No, no, but his question is, the FAA, they gave us a time period, but it was 30 days after May 29th or something, and so we're already well past that.
It was, they wanted to, it was the end of August, they wanted to see the process.
Well, we've started the process.
Yeah, we started tonight. We started tonight.
The first thing I noticed was, well, I can take it before council, but I can't make the vote one way or the other.
So September 10th, it'll be a discussion and possible action. Please make sure that anybody with any opinion on this who wants to express their feelings is here.
So it's a two-meeting process, the first meeting...
Is a reading.
First meeting is an introduction of the amended ordinance. Second meeting would be the actual adoption.
Right.
I think if, I'd suggest that the next meeting be a discussion only, because...
Well, and possible action, so it doesn't mean that we're going to do action.
I know, but I, I guess that... We stopped Sunset in front of FAA, right? So whatever, we cobble together?
I'm not exactly sure on how they're going to view that stalling. It's not stalling, but, you know, that's their discretion. I can't speak for them.
Why don't you tell them we've had public input and that we want to have, we want to take into account what they've said, but also take into account what our tenants and our public have to say.
Dolores?
Just to let you guys know, if we're having discussion on it, I have to notice it in the paper for us to take action on it. So if we're going to discuss it on the 10th and then take action, there's no changes that can be made after that, because I'm noticing in the paper.
So discussion on the 10th and then action on the 24th.
Okay, so discussion, we'll go just discussion on September 10th.
Okay.
That's true. I think we'd be more comfortable.
Okay, and could you tomorrow call the FAA and tell them everything we talked about? You can even tell them that on Friday, this thing will be live and they can watch the video, if they want. Is there any other public comment on this topic? Closing comment, any other council? Okay, next agenda item. Okay, approved purchase of water treatment filter media replacement project number WTR 2588-00 in an amount not to exceed $73,287.93. Is this your presentation?
Yeah, it is.
Okay, go.
Basically, this is replacing a critical part of our filtration system. It's been in use for over 10 years from the plant to the model and has passed its life expectancy.
Wasn't it on the agenda last time?
No, this is the first time.
Okay, all right.
Yeah. If you have any questions.
Well, I'd just like to, being as we do not, it says in here, Walter, that it was part of the approved 2526 budget and...
We have an approval.
And I don't, being as we haven't created a 2526 budget, I'd like to see, then I'm assuming it's in the 2425 budget?
It was carried over, yeah.
So I just need to see where it is in the, have somebody show me in the budget where I've got the Water Enterprise Fund right in front of me.
And why did we carry it over? We didn't get a chance to get it installed, but...
Yeah, we were waiting, yeah, the media, we were waiting to see the stuff and everything. It's been planned for the last year and a half, yes. And we have to locate it, we were trying to locate the media. It has to come from actually back in.
And it's needed. It's needed for waterfall, I mean, for trees.
It is. Page 109 on the 25 budget. Underwater construction in progress, 4:30. We have one, two, three, four lines from the bottom.
The filters. Okay, 2526 for $100,000. And what's the cost on this 70?
$73,000. See, there we saved $27,000.
And we're trying to cut down on the transportation costs. That's very high, isn't it?
Okay.
A lot of it's coming from Pennsylvania where the minerals actually are mined out of. So we're trying to see if we can get reduced costs for the shipping.
All right. Any other council comment on this? Any public comment on this? No water specialists want to comment on this?
You don't need to beg for it.
Tamara Allen.
I'm just asking.
I can't pass that up. I can't pass that up. No, I saw this item and I think it's great, obviously.
I'm sorry, who are you?
Tamara Allen's, I couldn't pass it up. I said, we need this. You need to replace your filter media. End of story.
All right. Any other public comment if you want to top that? Hearing done, public comment is closed. All right, let's go, Dolores.
Councilmember Burton.
Did we have a motion?
I would like to motion that we adopt, because we've had such good public input on this, too.
I'd like to have a motion.
It would be better. Okay, so Terry made a motion.
To approve the purchase of filter media replacement for the Willits Water Heaping Plan.
Second.
No, he already did.
Terry did, beat you to it.
Councilmember Burton.
Hi.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Stransky.
Yes.
Allenies.
Hi. All right, thank you, Walter and Tamara. Update on the rail-to-trail project with the recommendation to allocate Major K funds to the amount of $470,145.50 to cover the construction professional services cost up to $9,428,235.50 presenting staff member Rod Williams, interim city manager, and just making sure we all know that at this, I'll let Rod do it and I'll finish it. I'll let Rod start. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. The primary purpose here is to allocate some funding to the project to cover potential additional costs beyond the construction, the initial construction budget and include the professional services related to materials testing and inspections, resident engineer work and whatever else may arise during the course of the project. I'll preface this with saying that I understand that this could require the blessing of the Major K committee post after this meeting. I'm aware of that, they have not been consulted. The other aspect is typically we separate the construction costs from the professional services. They're usually separate and not considered necessarily in this ask related to funding, but considering the state of the budget right now, I thought it was important to include those in the total cost and include those as part of this request for additional, this recommendation for additional allocation. The, I want to also be clear, because there's some question like it is, providing the previous agenda summary and some of the information from the February 13th meeting, it was a little bit confusing for me when I was trying to put it together in a cogent, understandable and clear agenda summary, but the project is under construction. Contract has been ordered, I want to be clear on that. And also, two things with respect to this allocation. One, it would be towards, it would be used at the end of the project when all of the grant funding has been obligated or obligated and requested for reimbursement. And we're still, Dusty can attest to this, there's still, it's not giving up the idea of looking for additional grant funding to cover whatever costs may be incurred through the life of the project. The issue is, having looked at the previous agenda summary, it was a little unclear where the funding would come from. So how do you approve a change order for, that exceeds that amount, the amount of funding, without saying it's going to be paid out of some, having some source of funding, right? So once we get past the $9 million, at the time of, at the time of, I'll go back to, let me get to this real quick. At the time of contract in January, the available construction funding was $9,11,090, which exceeded the contract, the base bid from Bootleer by about $32,000. What was approved was the base bid plus 10%, which was an additional $900,000, which technically would have been $9,877,199. My recommendation is to reduce that contingency to 5% rather than 10%. I think it's ambitious, but I think we're, you know, Walter and Garrett and everybody's working hard, and Bootleer at construction for sure, working hard to control the costs during construction and, but I want to be transparent with respect to the total project budget and if we get to the point where we need more than the nine, what I'm asking it to be reduced to 9.4, 9.4 million, we're coming back to council to let everybody know what's going on and justify additional funding. I'm trying to think here. Also included here, I think what came up in the last meeting, there was a request for the contract, contracts in the agenda summary for everybody to read. Current, the current project as of, so as of August 2025, I will point out that it's my understanding that the $225,000 amendment, pending contract amendment is not valid anymore. I'm not saying what it is, it's going to be less or more, but I don't, the idea is it's likely going to be reduced from that $225. But still using that as, it was on my desk as an amendment. And that's when there was a question of, how are we paying for this if we're above the actual amount available to pay for the project, right? That's the reason we're here and asked for Major K allocation. There are some estimates in here with respect to the resident engineer. Walter and I spoke about SHN's contract. SHN, just to answer a question that was asked in the last meeting, was procured through the on-call services, RFP that went out. And Dusty said that that's likely, I'll say likely reimbursable, because procurement followed the Caltrans requirements, but that still remains to be seen. So the current construction contract has been reduced to $8.79 million with deductive amendments. There's been some back and forth and a lot of help from the Bootleers with some modifications to materials being used, et cetera. So, and I've given in here, provided in here what the fiscal impact is to Major K. It's about 32% of the annual revenue expected from Major K and also why it's consistent with the intent of Major K to use it for this type of project.
Well, $400,000, $450,000, you're saying represents 32% of the annual revenue of Major K?
417. The 417 is the ask of approximately 1.2 million. I think that's where we ended it. About 1.2 million, Major K in 20, yeah. So, 417, 145. So, 417, 145.
Well, I'm looking at, I'm looking at numbers that vary from 75,000 a month to...
Oh, 34.
100,000. Yeah, I mean, I don't know. Geez.
So what I didn't hear, but I hear...
It's not a use 1.2, maybe I use 1.2.
At every other Major K meeting and rails to trails is, we're the pass-through from Caltrans, so Caltrans is basically paying us after we submit the bills for, after Bootleer does the service, we pay Bootleer, we send Bootleer's bill to the Caltrans, and Caltrans reimburses us to pay. So if we use this for Major K, and this is to Manny and to the city manager, are we one, we as the city will, it's 100% guaranteed that when that money is reimbursed, if Major K fronts the money and then Caltrans reimburses the money, can we have 100% understanding that money is put back into Major K?
Except if there's, well, there's additional costs. We've come across unforeseen circumstances. There's been some additional bills that are well under the 10% original contingency we have, but yeah, these are going to be added costs.
Right, so you know, if we didn't, there, there was a question whether GHD costs would be, would be part of the design, which isn't part of that 9 million, or, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to, we will not have any discussion about professional liability or, or issues related to the, to the, to the construction drawings until much later in the project, if at all, so. But what, what we're saying is, there's 9 million. Right now, we know, Dusty assures me he's going to get more money, right? But that's not, that's not, that's, it's not in the bank, right? It's not, it's not there for us to say that's how we're going to pay for additional costs. So if we sign an amendment that says we're going to pay up to, you know, any amendment beyond $9,011,000, we have to be able to say where we're getting that money. That's my, that's my, that's my opinion of, of, you know, responsibly managing the project and the tax dollars. And I think establishing that we're going to put Major K towards the project will lift some of the pressure off of Walter and his group because if you, if we're just stuck trying to cut every little potential possible thing out of a project to save a little bit of money, and that's our, that's our, that's our focus, I mean, obviously, cost control is important, but you get into that situation where you cut things that end up costing you down the line, or the old adage, you step over the dollars to save the dime, or what, I don't know if that's exactly how it works, but, but having a situation where you have some contingency, contingency to work with, because the 10% contingency that was approved in February had no source. It just said, we're approving 10% contingency, and, and there wasn't an actual dollar amount attached to that 10% contingency. So what we're doing right now, we're, we're establishing what, what that contingency amount is, we're reducing it, and in, I think the...
And we're saying where it's coming from, is what you're saying.
Yeah, primary purpose is to be transparent and, and assure that, ensure that we have some money to cover additional costs if they arise.
But I guess getting back to what Tom says, if we don't need to touch it, or if we end up fronting money and it comes back in the, in the way of a grant or reimbursement from Caltrans, then we would pay back our Measure K fund so that we can reallocate that for other uses.
Yes. Okay. Any other, yep, that's it. Any other counsel comments? Okay, public comment on this matter. Most expensive item, oh, by all means, Suprema.
I just want to state that I'm very...
I'm sorry, if you say who you are, I'm sorry.
Suprema Rodriguez for the record.
Thanks.
I just want to express that I'm very concerned over the borrowing or otherwise of Major K, for starters. Secondly, if the council chooses to take money from Major K, I heard that there's a hope that the money would go back, but if you're going to pass this, please, please make it very clear and concrete what the plan is, not the hope, the intent, but very clearly the money will go back, you will not exceed this amount, because there's a project that was approved in February is really putting the city in a dire situation in terms of cash flow, and so I'm really, really worried that you're dipping into Major K. I know that there are already things that the city is using Major K for, even if it hasn't been articulated and spelled out because you haven't done your budget yet, but we know that annually, Major K, some of that money has already been allocated to support the police department as it is right now. We gave raise increase, we purchased things that we agreed to, so we already know that there's a portion of the annual Major K that if the city continues to run the way it is, has already been allocated. That's somewhere in the ballpark of approximately 700,000 to 800,000. So if you start dipping into the, you're, without any cuts to, to what we've got going on, and every month that goes by, there's less to cut because you're one more month into the new fiscal year, so I just want to express that I don't support this and I'm very concerned.
Thank you very much. Okay, any other public, by all means.
I'm Jamie Bootleer, and I think that Major K could basically be used as the bank account for the job. Stay out of your general fund, right? So you could pay us out of that, send off your reimbursement. Your reimbursement goes straight back into it, so there's no loss of money. Then the extra money that he's asking for, obviously, what they're saying is, yeah, maybe there's a chance that you don't get 100% of that back, and that's what's being worked on, but I think the big amount of the money, it's just, then you're not taking it from your general fund. It's not being a dire issue on the city because you would just use Major K as your take it out, put it back, take it out, put it back, so it's no problem. You know, so it shouldn't be some big issue in that way for the city.
Thank you. Any other public comment, by all means? Come on up.
I'm Desakaria. Watching the whole budget issues, I mean, we all know, I wouldn't approve anything till your budget is in place, and I can see it. I think the problem with the city is we put a lot of things, we paid for it in hope to get the money back. How much money we're waiting to get back? And when is it going to come back? And if it's going to come back? So you're, in my opinion, from a business point of view, I agree with the city manager, you're digging in a, in a sand, what do you call it? You know, the sand, you just keep digging the hole, the hole, without solid financial support.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, public comment's closed. To the council.
Manny, can you tell me what the fund balance in the Measure K fund is right now?
At the moment, it was, last few days, about 1.6 million.
And it...
Because we use the $2 million in order to be able to move to general fund.
Pardon me?
We use, we were using the $2 million to move.
Yeah, well, I mean, we did 2 million and then we did 760 for police over time, and then we did one other one for...
The balance before the 2 million was about 3.6.
So, so the balance right now is 1.6.
Yes.
What's, what's the general fund balance today?
General fund balance is currently being determined. It's around about 1.1, I think, with the $2 million coming in, and so that's kind of where we're standing at the moment until we close our books and maneuver the, maneuver the accruals back and everything.
So that will be done by next Wednesday?
The budget, or, sorry, the audit?
No, no, not the audit. I mean, the audit just...
Yeah, it'll be done by next Wednesday.
But you'll be able to find...
We're fine tuning it right now. There's a lot of moving parts in it because we're trying to determine exactly how many FTEs go into what section.
I, I, I'm sure there are.
Anything else, Bruce?
No, I mean, I get, I, I agree that, that we need to have, we need to have, identify a contingency for, at least a 5% contingency for the project. I'm not sure that, how many projects the Willets has done in the last 10 years that have come in, completed with, with a 5% contingency. I, I know that in the Main Street Rehab Project for the freeway bypass, they wanted to give us, the city, $5 million for that in cash upfront, and we, we turned it down, and I talked to Matt Brady, the head of Caltrans, after that project was done, and I asked him if we had done the right thing in turning down that $5 million. He said, oh, yes, to the tune of maybe two or three times, so. I'm not, I agree that this needs to be done. I, I, I'm not sure that I wouldn't be just as comfortable doing it after next Wednesday's meeting as opposed to doing it tonight. I understand, and I don't think there is an urgency in this regard. The Measure K fund will not be a cash fund to cover the, the cash flow for building this project with 1.6 million dollars in it, and it simply, there's not enough money in it to do that. So the re, we'll take it out of it and reimburse it. That isn't, that, that fund is not sufficient to handle that demand. So I guess I'm, I like to make decisions up here, but I also not, I think we're going to have to make a hard decision about how to fund that, but I don't see a reason, timely reason to not address this at next week's budget hearing. It is, the whole day is being spent on that topic.
Okay. Anybody else, council?
Well, I would just feel more comfortable, if we could push it to next Wednesday, I would be prepared to make a decision next Wednesday.
So next Wednesday is our budget workshop, everyone, so that's what we're talking about. So if there's not a motion, we're going to put this, I'll put this on the agenda for next meeting.
That's fine.
Do I hear a motion?
Well, do we need next, next Wednesday or next meeting?
No, next, next Wednesday is a budget workshop, it's not a city council meeting. We're not going to vote on anything.
It is considered a council meeting.
A meeting, but the agenda is, the agenda is the budget.
Budget workshop.
Right. And so...
It could be amended if we needed to, that's why I wanted to...
No, no, I mean, we can, we can bring it up at the, after the budget workshop, the next scheduled council meeting, it could be...
Which is in two weeks from tonight.
Be agendized to address it.
Right.
If a project doesn't happen.
Yeah, I just want to, yeah, it could wait until the meeting after next. The reason it's somewhat urgent in, for getting, the reason it's on this, this agenda is because we've exceeded the amount of money that's available from Caltrans for reimbursement. And without, without knowing that, the discussion last week was, was about, related to the forecast, the cash forecast, and, and whether or not the SHN contract was included in that forecast. And, and based on what I was told after the meeting, that we were already over the, the $9,011,000, it wasn't included in the forecast, one, two, there's no source of funding for any additional costs.
So are we able to pay bills?
We're just, yeah, I just, it's, I think, I just want to say, I think it's fine to, to wait for, to, for the following meeting. I just wanted to say that's why it came to this meeting prior to the...
And I get that, and so then my question then is, is the contractor, is it slowing up the project if we don't identify this? And, and one question on that project, I guess, there seemed to be a, a holdup in, in putting in the bridge abutments or the bridge foundations. Has that been, has that been resolved?
There's design changes and some regulatory issues with fishing wildlife that will resolve right now.
Are they going to be...
Yeah, we're pushing heavily on that to get those done. The bridges are on their way. Contractor's already paid for them, they're coming in September.
Yeah, I understand.
So that's what we're pushing hard on, to keep this flowing and not have any delays to give, to have any problems going into winter and everything, yeah.
Because, because you have to have that done by the 15th of October.
Yeah, we're going to be, this is why it's going to be very tight. That's why any delays we have could affect the potential state of going into winter. We're running it really tight right now, yes.
Okay, a little off topic. Do we have, do we have a motion for measure, or item number nine, Seas and Charles? Hearing no motion, we'll put that off until the August 27th meeting. Okay. City council announcements, communication reports, go down the line. Bruce, anything?
Nothing.
Jerry?
I have a mega cities meeting in Fortuna on the 22nd.
Okay. Anything?
I have a Mendocino Solid Waste Management meeting that was postponed, and I just got message of it today, that it was canceled. And I also have an EDFC general meeting from 2:00 to 4:00 tomorrow, and as far as I know, it's still on.
Economic Development and Financial Incorporation, Financial Incorporation.
Yes, having newly accepted the responsibility of the INCOG, I'll be attending our first meeting on Monday, 18th, which sadly means I won't be able to make the first day of school, but I'll be okay with it.
It's a wonderful.
I know. It's the whole day. I appreciate that.
First day, I can't believe it.
And so, anything else?
No.
So yesterday in this room, we had 21 wonderful people here to talk about food truck ordinance. It was a lively meeting. It was a very, very good meeting. We, we didn't, we didn't change anything. We're not ready to bring an ordinance to board, to the council, but we're going to meet again next month, I think on the 27th. I think I could be mistaken. And we are welcoming the Chamber of Commerce input, food truck vendors input, brick and mortar restaurant owners input, and anybody who has a concerns input.
It'll be September 23rd.
23rd, September 23rd, here at 5 o'clock, not 3, not 3:30, but at 5 o'clock here for food truck ordinance, if you still have extra time in your life. There's also a, we have an opening on Measure K, and we're going to be putting an announcement in the newspaper.
We are going to be announcing in the newspaper, asking for applications. One of the committee members resigned recently.
Right.
So that will be going out in the paper probably next week.
Okay.
You know, that caused me to have a thought.
We're, we're all here ready.
You know, in terms of our, our quest for a permanent city manager, I would, I, you know, I know that we got stalled in our effort to recruit a headhunting firm to provide that service for us, and I, and I have been approached by a person or two in the community with an interest in the job. I guess I just take the, at some point, take the council's temperature on just advertising that job locally and see what kind of response we get, or put it in the Willets Weekly, or put it on the website, or do something and let's see what we can find locally.
So our human resources technician, she's not here tonight, but that's, that doesn't take council action, but putting it in, you know, indeed, in the, in the web search is certainly something we could talk to her about and have that accomplished.
Yeah, she, she was just finalizing everything. She's been working on it for a while. She's going to go out, she's going to put it out also on government jobs.
Yeah, I mean, but I think...
Yeah, it's not, not the headhunter route. Can we talk about that a while now?
Let's just do it.
But locally, too.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I put up something.
Yeah, I don't think it is.
Okay.
Okay.
So we're giving direction to have it run in the local newspaper?
As well, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, UKIA and Willets. Okay, any more city council announcement, communication reports, or good and welfare? Bruce? Bruce, Kerry?
No, I'm fine, thank you.
I was going to say, school's starting, as our vice mayor just said, and I think it's the 18th, it's the first day of school and we got all the little ones there around Brookside and Blosser and Becton, so I'm sure the police will be out there making sure folks are slowing down, so there we go, and this for the TV audience, I think. Most of you folks in here probably don't have little ones at this point, but, so there we go, slow down for the kiddies.
Okay.
I have little ones that have little ones.
Anything?
Yeah, I just want to remind the community about the Once in a Blues Moon Festival happening this Saturday. It's a wonderful event. Should be, should be a good time, have a while, if you guys are interested in that, look it up, it's on Facebook and a lot of other places too.
Okay, and I have nothing, so that concludes and thank you, Darren. Wait, I'm sorry, Glorious.
I do have something. Willits Frontier Days will be hosting a movie night down at the area that the street dances bring help, where they're, they're got a giant movie screen, a projector.
When?
What was the date again, Marcus? August 22nd.
August 22nd. I know, and tacos are available for purchase?
It's a fundraiser for the juniors group, so...
So what time on the 22nd?
What's the movie?
Eight Seconds.
Oh, Eight Seconds.
Why not?
What was the movie?
Eight Seconds.
Oh, Eight Seconds, rodeo movie.
Okay.
Of course.
All right, thank you from bottom of my heart, thank you for attending and thank you for watching.
Thank you.